All right, this time I'd like to reconvene meetings. Could we please stand for the Pledge of Legions? My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the wisdom of the liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right, begin our meeting by approving the agenda. I need a motion to approve the agenda. Matt, second, Carlo, any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. All right, we'll start with the public comment. Please refer to the public comment guidelines on the back of the agenda for this portion of the meeting. I will now call on those who have signed up to speak. When called, please come to the table microphone and state your name, address for the Board of Clerk's record. Tonight, we have one person sign to speak, Dan Wood. It picks it up from here.
Good evening, Board. Daniel Wood, for the drive with Walworth Road. I came here tonight planning on just listening, but just a couple hours ago when I was reading the board packet where it stated that at the last board meeting, which I was unable to attend, there were some topics, and one of the topics was miscellaneous items. And in that was a subtopic called busing concerns around arrival times and empty buses were addressed and rumors dispelled, which is a pretty powerful word. That piqued my interest, given the topic that I discussed at the prior board meeting. I'm seeing some concerning trends in the school district where, over the last couple months at least, I've seen the administration lie about many scenarios. And two examples were from the last board meeting. The superintendent lied when he tried covering up concerns that I had raised at the prior meeting about bus drop-off. He stated that buses get to school, let the kids out, and leave during this rollout process. That is not happening. The early buses are showing up around 8:20, and they sit there until around 8:30 to unload. I've witnessed this multiple times during the morning. My observations are the truth, and his explanations and statements are lies because they are not happening. I do not disagree with the method that he's talking about, but it's not happening. Then shortly after that, Jeremy asked a question about making sure that kids are in the classroom before the academic time of 8:45, which is somewhere around the two hour and 15 minute timeframe during last board meeting's video. The superintendent answered, and I quote, "Yes, that is correct. Kids are going to be there before the academic time." That is a lie. On 9/5, my child's boots hit the concrete at 8:49 a.m. On 10/26, it was 8:42 a.m. On 11/21, it was 8:41 a.m. On 10/1, it was 8:39 a.m. And on 12/8, it was 8:40 a.m. For an eight-year-old to walk into school when literally every other person is in that school, to walk down the hall to the farthest back corner of the school where my daughter's classroom is, take her boots off, her coat, her backpack, put away lunches, and get prepped in less than five minutes is impossible. We have a problem in that the administration is trying to explain every scenario and paint a picture that everything is perfect in the school. They contradict everything that the public says and plays it off as fake news or rumors or lies. This leads even more mistrust between the public and the administration. We have enabled a culture where that when a person speaks last, they are the correct one, and that always happens to be Calvin, because we have no rebuttal system here. I'll give you an example, a far-fetched one, a public comment. The sky is blue. The administration comments, "You know what? There's rumors out there that are not true, not true at all. I want the Board to know that we are diligently exploring different scenarios to make sure that the sky is green, to make sure the sky is green." Crickets, crickets, crickets. No one talks. No thoughts, no nothing. So therefore, the Board must think, hey, no one disputed that the sky is green, therefore the sky must be green.
Okay, wrap it up, please.
Yeah, that is why I'm here. The Board, I ask you to start setting up a handful of meetings throughout the year, maybe once a quarter, where topics can be discussed between both sides in public. There can be dialogue and debate about certain topics. If this policy was in place, the public could politely dispute the answers given, clarify questions being asked, so that the administration could answer correctly, with some part of the public then agreeing with the answer. When both sides have a more open dialogue and talk, I would expect great things to transpire. That is not what we have right now. We live in a he-said, she-said environment where dialogue is hard to come by. The only dialogue that can happen is behind closed doors, which is not good. Please think about allowing for a more open forum. If people cannot hold back comments and things to get heated and personal, we can stop, but we need more debating. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, are there any Board members who would like to make any comments? Cam?
I attended the Peter Pan musical on Friday, and I thoroughly enjoyed it, and I talked to probably three or four different, just parents that were there and some of the people I've talked to since, who had comments that, first of all, they're amazed at the sheer number of kids that were in the production and how well it went, that everybody, like they said, everybody's where they're supposed to be. There were a lot of kids. As well as the age range, I had some parents comment to me that, you know, for fifth through eighth grade, that was a phenomenal production, and it truly was. Kudos to the staff. I sent Mike Allen an email and told him how great I thought it was.
Okay, thank you. Carrie?
One of the other events in addition to Peter Pan, I got to attend the science fair on the 17th at the elementary school, and just a great opportunity. There was, half of it was a science fair, so any of the kids at the elementary school who wanted to do a project was able to demonstrate their project. And the kids did a really sensational job. We have a really, really talented group of students there, and got to really enjoy going to teach one and seeing it. And then in the other room, there were science activities that were led by some of our middle school students or some parent volunteers. And it was quite packed there that evening, especially on a Wednesday evening, and just really thanked the PTO and all the volunteers that came out, because the kids really, really enjoyed themselves, and it was really nice to see the amount of activity going on. And just one more piece for the Peter Pan, in addition to the staff, for those who got to see it, you got to see the flying apparatuses of many of some of the lead roles. And for those of you who weren't aware, those were parent volunteers, like our students' parent volunteers, who took the time to make sure that they held those students up and had training from the company and spent hours learning the training, doing the musical, and then hours taking it down. So, and they're behind the scenes, so they're not necessarily seen, so thank you to them, because that really just kind of put an extra spin on the performance. That was just really, really good. So, that's all I had.
Just to tag on that, Carrie, last week at a basketball game, Cory English came back, and he was at the basketball game, and I knew they were practicing down there doing the flying. So I mentioned him, Cory English was here, did the plays, played basketball, went to, was on Broadway, lives in London now and performs over there, and he was amazed at what was going on at the play. And maybe next year, I'll come back, this time you'll have a talk with the kids.
Yeah.
We'll get it set up, so you can do that.
That'd be great.
But he was amazed that they would fly. He goes, "I didn't get to fly, and I was in this."
Yeah, he was hardcore.
Yeah. Okay, so just wanted to tag you on that. Ron?
I also had an opportunity to attend the musical. I was there on Sunday, and I would like to extend my congratulations to the kids and the staff on a fine performance. And I was thinking, you know, what a celebrative experience for almost one out of every six students in our middle school. I'm sure that 10, or 20, or even 30 years from now, they'll remember their role in Peter Pan. They might not remember the grade they received in math or English, but they certainly will remember being on this stage. And then I also have to report to the Board on some news from Fort County. The formula for dues will stay the same for next year. We recently had a presentation from Tim Kramer, the Executive Director of the New York State School Boards Association. New York State School Boards Association is offering to take Fort County under their wing, either in whole or in part, and offering a process by which we may pick and choose some services from Fort County. So basically, at this point, Fort County has three choices in front of it. Remain the same, go under the BOSI's wing, or buy or combine in some fashion with the New York State School Boards Association. There is no timeline at this point for decision to be made on which of those three avenues will take place. The search for a new executive director is finally going to start, it's going to start next month, next month, and Scott Bishoping, the BOSI's District Superintendent, will head that search. I will be on the search committee, and I am also, will be on the leadership committee in picking the leadership for the next Fort County School Boards Association, so I will keep you up to date on what transpires there. And then lastly, you know that Fort County hired Ray Wagner to do an audit. That audit is done, and has not been presented yet to the Fort County School Boards Association, but I anticipate that that will happen at the next executive committee meeting. And then the last thing I would like to congratulate, our wrestling team. They did win the Wayne Finger Lakes tournament. I think there were 20 or 21 schools there, and we won by a margin of about 30 points. Thank you.
Thanks. Who else? All right, move on to our superintendent's Board. Dr. Carlo?
Thank you. Good evening, Board. As has already been said, in terms of some highlights, we're really proud of our students' performance and Peter Pan. Everything that we know has gone extremely well. So I say that when I know that behind the scenes, our people were just working, and there were some things that were pretty busy. Boy, what a fantastic performance, and our kids did a really great job. So very excited about the great work that our kids and our staff did in that production. Just really a great presentation for our community, so just really proud of our kids. Second of all, this has been midterms week. We've been basically with kids coming in and going out, and our kids have been studying and trying to do really well in these exams, so really, really rooting for all of our kids and just really want them to know that we are thinking of them as they continue and finish out this week, basically. One of the things that we did last year, we talked about how whatever program we offered, we offered it for all of our students. And in one of the areas that we kind of wanted to make sure that we increased was in our enrichment area. And last year, we put into place an additional enrichment teacher who goes in and supports our kids, provides enrichment for all kids, and also those kids who are, needs even more acceleration, they provide that support for them as well. We also had a great program recently that was held over at Wayne Elementary School. Herb Smith and the Freedom Trio, which is a really fun musical group, was there to try to encourage our students through music. And we'll just share with you just a quick minute of that presentation that occurred. It was a lot of fun. Okay, are you ready? Can you hear me?
Da-da-doo-da.
I think you can do better than that. Let's try it. Da-da-doo-da.
Da-da-doo-da. Wee-ee-oh.
Hey! Wee-ee-oh-oh.
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 Shabba-da-ba-ba-ba-ba.
Woo!
Woo!
Aha, give it up again! So as you can see, the event was a lot of fun for our kids and encouraged them through music. He was doing some scat singing there with the kids, and they had, you know, several instruments that they used to support our kids with on the day. It was just a great exercise, just with all the kids at the Monday meeting that they hold over at WE, and just a lot of fun. So really a great opportunity, something that we haven't been able to do in the past, but we're now able to do that for our students, so we're really glad to see that take place. All right, so a couple of things I wanted to share tonight, just in public, so that everyone hears it. We have some surveys that we've sent out and some ballots that we sent out that had some challenges. We just want everyone to know. So in terms of the survey, as you know, Board, we have a budget survey that we put out each year, and the survey is online. And in the past, we haven't done as many surveys out in the public in terms of mailing them out to everyone, because we haven't gotten a huge return. This year, we did do that, and we recognized after they were mailed out that there was an error in two of the questions of the survey. And so what we have done is we have corrected the survey, reset it out. People should get that, we would say, next week, I'm thinking Monday, Monday basically, Tuesday is. And we're asking people who would like to fill it out at home as opposed to the one that's online, if you can just send it back to the district. We are wanting to extend the time, and Board, we were all in agreement, if you're all okay, we'd like to extend the time to February 10th. So we're asking people if they can just fill it out, send it to us, and if, we do have some people who said, "I really don't want to do the one at home, I'd rather do the one online," then feel free, you can do the one online, that's no problem. Yes.
So if you filled it out online previously, that was okay, it was just the mailed one.
Yes, there was no issue with the one that was online. It was just the issue, the issue was just the one that was mailed out.
Thanks.
So everybody knows. So we have it till February 10th. Our apologies, and we're asking people if they will certainly fill it out and send it back to us. Input from the public is really important, so we want to get it as accurate as we possibly can. And the other piece is there was some absentee ballots, all of the ballots, we do have some ballots that have gone out to our public. We had a particular group of ballots that did not have, there was some information that was missing in the ballot piece there. It was mailed out about two weeks ago, about a week or two ago. Some of our public received it and didn't have some of the information that was necessary, the ballot information. We have already re-mailed out those ballots for about 60 people that we wanted to make sure that we got the right information to. I've already been told that people have received their ballots, the new, the corrected envelope already in the mail, so we just wanted people to know. Again, our apologies, that information went out without all the information. People do have it now, and we're just asking people to mail it in before that date of Tonight, we have some updated information also available to our public. So as you all are aware, during our last board meeting, we talked about our Chromebook rollout for our students from grade seven through nine. And after we rolled out the Chromebook and had our orientation night, we learned that there were some questions around security, at least from a parent, that were floating out online, or out in social media. We contacted that parent and certainly were able to answer those questions. But also the principals, there was a meeting that's taking place, I think, tonight, if I remember correctly in the pack, to help parents with any questions that they might have around security. And we've also posted some online resources for parents at the site that's there. Parents can go, click on, and they can find a variety of information and questions and answers, and just information that they might need to help, to alleviate any concerns around the Chromebook. One of the things we are asking our parents to do and our community to do is, if there are questions, all right, really, let's go to the source, right? So we're asking people to please contact the principal, have a conversation with them first, so that way we can try to resolve any questions or any concerns and quell any rumors that might get going. So our kids have been using the Chromebooks, they've been moving forward, and teachers are very excited, kids are very excited. I've already spoken to a number of kids who are just really enjoying being able to have that Chromebook. Talked to some kids talking, who shared with me about how they're co-writing documents, how they're able to now do math online, and just really enjoying using the Chromebooks. So again, any questions or concerns, we want to just encourage our folks, please, you know, go out and reach out to the principals first, because they can help to get those answers for you right away.
Just a quick question for this link that is here for parents. Is that already on our district site in the, like, kind of homepage or, you know what I mean, where parents will have to look?
It's not in our, it's linked, but I'm going to put it there.
Okay, thanks, Amy.
I believe Derek has some of his information already on the middle school site as well.
Okay, thanks.
So as you know, we have a public vote that's going to be coming out, and we have a number of things that we're going to be doing around the public vote, and we've already started to do some things. Let me just grab some papers. You might come and join me, you might have to join me. We've got some things that we're doing to help with the PR on this. So we already have a couple of things in our local newspapers, but we are also going to be doing some mailers out. Amy and I met with, and also Dan, met with King &amp; King, and we've already kind of started to work around our mailers, so we have a couple of things, I'm going to just kind of send around to you, some of the samples of mailers, and also going to send around a PR timeline for you all. So just here are some of the things that will be happening. And we'll be sharing with the public, first of all, through our newsletter. We've already done some information through one of our newsletters that recently went out, but we'll have another newsletter that we're going to be sending out around the 9th of February. Our public hearing will be on February 15th. We have an additional mailing that will be going out through postcard around the 22nd with some of the information that you see there in front of you on postcard. We also want to do some video work and an e-blast out to some of our parents throughout February. And Steve and Tim, I know you both were on that team that helped to put this together. And so what we're looking for is, if you two are interested, would like to do a video of with some of our teachers and members from that capital construction project team, that will help to answer some questions for our community, and we want to blast that out to our community through Facebook, so that they can get more information, kind of like a cyber meeting online, basically, where people can get questions and answers done. So if you're interested, we'd like to finish that up as well in February. We want to do that January 31st, I believe is the date. So we'll send it out to you, and if you're able to join us, we'd love to have you there.
Time, what time will it be?
We're not sure where we'll be here first.
Okay, thank you.
And then, as we do with our budget votes, we'll be out, meeting at all of our schools and with our departments. And Board, we'll send you these dates for our meeting. I know that Kathy and I have been working on these dates, calling a number of places, so we're, so this year, kind of what we want to do is go out to our town halls. We've contacted both Walworth Town and also Ontario. We'd like to go out to our fire men's homes, our fire department.
Stations.
Thank you. So we have reached out already to the Walworth group and also to the Ontario group, and then we want to go to our different buildings to see if we can kind of just share more information out there. So what we're going to do is I'm going to send you out the dates, and Board members, if you can go, we'd love to have you there, but we just want to let you know that's going to be coming. And also the Ontario Community Center. We know that a big voting part in our district are some of our seniors, and a number of them we know are at the Ontario Community Center during the daytime, so we'd like to go out and spend time and just share this information with them as well. Aside from those that are there, we've also given you things that we're going to be doing in January, in February, and in March, which really are all of these activities that we have there in front of you. We have some storyboards that will be posted around the district, again, videos that we're going to try to make sure we get out there in February, e-blasts for parents, flyers out to the public in postcards. So I would say, this month, February, we're going to really be loading up with a lot of PR. Now, one of the things that we did talk about around some of this PR was making sure that we didn't do too much too early, but that we did it before the vote, so that people could have the information and not kind of lose it. So throughout February, pretty much every week, people will get some information in a variety of ways. Any questions about that? Amy, did you want to add anything, or?
No, not really. It means it's pretty comprehensive, and weekly we'll have updates that are going out, so we'll constantly be in the news on Facebook and different platforms, so it'll be pretty good coverage for us.
So those are just some of the drafts and things that we're working on, and we hopefully will have our final pieces together very shortly. Okay? Okay, thank you. Okay, Board, just to shift gears here, I want to talk to you a little bit about the New York State budget process. So in the next board meeting, Dan and I will be here, and we'll be sharing with you, we'll be doing some budget pieces together, and we want to kind of start the budget process and kind of get things rolling, get it done here. Just so you know, and I'm sure you all are pretty much aware, the state has certainly been working on the budget. They're already starting to open the negotiations. The state aid projections have already gone out, and there have been some concerns. You know, our district right now is looking at about a 1.4% increase, which really is not a lot, it's like $150,000 plus, and that doesn't cover really the increase of anything for us. I mean, you know, you have health insurance, you've got, you know, legacy costs, you've got the needs for programs, costs for contractual obligations, and that just really doesn't cover a lot for us. So many of the districts are really working diligently with our legislators around this. In fact, next week on Monday evening, a bunch of us are basically going to roll up in a car, a couple cars, and kind of get up there on Tuesday and do some real lobbying on behalf of our district. I am one that will be advocating on behalf of the district to see if we could secure additional funds from our legislators. We are hopeful that the state will provide more aid. We have been told by state officials that this year and next year will be really tough years, that there's a real fiscal issue, you know, that the state doesn't have some of the funds that they've had in the past to give the districts. So we have been warned as districts to really not expect, you know, quite a bit. But we're going to still go out and advocate, we've been told that before, we're going to still keep advocating, so we'll be going out very shortly. Just wanted to share that as we begin to prepare for our budget. Yes?
Just a quick question. The current number you gave us with the projected 1.4% increase number, what, and I don't know if you have it off the top of your head, but even for the future, a pilot agreement goes down a certain amount. Is it, do we know with the decrease in the pilot agreement with this increase, is, are we, are we essentially just flat from where we are where we lost, or?
I think when we get to the workshop, we're going to really be talking a lot about our budget, because, so first of all, again, in terms of the state aid, that's the foundation aid. And Dan, please correct me if I am misspeaking, I want to make sure that I said it correctly. That's the foundation aid piece, which is not that high. We are going to need to be really focused and working carefully around our budget. So this year, we had a reduction in our pilot from GNA, and next year, if I remember correctly, is the last year of our pilot, and I believe the amount is 250,000 less, if I remember correctly, 266, 266 less, which is pretty, you know, that's significant. So we already have a reduction this year, next year, there's another reduction amount. And we have some costs that have really blossomed since the beginning of the school year. So we have, and what are those costs? So we have a number of students who have come into district, I know Michelle is here, someplace around. We have quite a few students who have come into district, our students with disabilities, and who require some pretty extensive programming, have some real serious needs. Our cost at this time, we are at nearly $600,000 that was unbudgeted for, because we're trying to really cover the needs of our students. So we have some kids who've come in with some pretty serious needs, who are in some pretty busy, heavy-duty programs, and by law, as you know, we are required to make sure that we provide proper supports and services for all kids, which we are committed to doing. But those, you know, there's a pretty serious cost there. So, you know, as we work through the rest of this year, we're working through the year around make sure we meet those needs, but we have to prepare for those students next year, and on top of having, you know, a couple of things that are going to be less. So we've got state aid that's not coming in really high at this point, and hope to get at least another percent or two percent. And then we've got, aside from that, GNA pilot that is constantly reducing. And so there's some really significant things here that we're going to need to work through. So as we start to talk about the budget, we'll really dive in deep and try to share with you where we're at, and we are working together now as a team to really make sure that we can secure supports and services for our kids. But yes, it will be a challenging budget year, and not just here, but really in all districts.
The teacher retirement system is due to take a big increase next year as well.
Yes, yes, I believe it's 11%, Dan?
So this current year is 9.8%, next year is projecting 11%, so a 10% increase. Same thing.
And then there's also increases, if I remember correctly, to health insurance too, Dan, is that correct?
Sure, our consortium hasn't set the rates yet, but you can count on health insurance. Thank you.
Do you know ERS, Kathy?
Yep, that's, I think, 15 flat, which is about the same as last year.
Is that due to more people retiring? Because it can't be due to investments down there.
No, TOS did a recalibration of their internal expected interest rate. T R S did a recalibration of their internal expected interest rate year over year. So I think it used to be six and a half percent. I think it's come back to six.
So it's going to be an interesting year. I'll put it that way. I do believe we will make it through it. We will figure it out. And when we come back in our next meeting, we have a budget workshop at least, and we'll get into the budget the next couple of meetings. And we'll really work through all those concerns, yes.
Now, you said next year is the last year of the pilot.
Yes.
Not to add more. Thanks. But so I assume we'll be getting together with GNA and...
We're already working on that. What we're working on right now is the whole negotiation process. So we are already reaching out to those leaders. There's a variety of people, you know, the county, the town, GNA, that we're all going to need to get together and negotiate the pilot agreement. So, you know, our last agreement each year, you know, what was coming in was basically shrinking. The level was shrinking. We expect, we hope, to try to, you know, not shrink away too much. But we are expecting that that agreement might continue to shrink. Over the next couple of years, you know, everyone knows that, you know, there's been some support in place to try to hold GNA steady from the state. But who knows what will happen in the future? You know, we were part of those meetings. And Rowan was with me as we were out advocating to keep GNA open. And it's open. You know, the state did put that extra piece in place to hold it steady there. But in terms of an agreement, there really is no guarantee at this time in terms of how much that we might maintain where we're at. So we'll see what happens. But that is going to be a busy time this year. Another thing we want to share with you all, Board, just the process in terms of the mental health clinics. All three are now up and running. There are push-in programs that are already moving forward. We've already started with eighteen referrals, and we haven't been open for two weeks. So kids are already starting to get services here in the district. And we're seeing that number grow each week, which is really great because we want our kids to be able to access those clinics. We want to do a really nice grant opening right at the end of February. We're looking at, is it the twenty-third? I think is the date. And we'll send that out to you all in invite. We'd like to have a nice grant opening right here in the high school and then a reception right afterwards. We'll have some people from Wayne County Mental Health, some of our staff, some of our students and parents. We'd love to have some of our board members there just to kind of cut the revenue and open up the mental health clinics officially, basically. So we'll be sending out the date in the invite.
The three clinics are elementary school, middle school, high school, around.
Yes. And our goal is by next year, we'd like to see we can open a fourth in the primary school as well. So we have Dr. Syracuse, who is going to come up. And just before he comes, I do want to respond to some of the concerns that came up tonight in terms of the transportation piece, just so we're clear. Board, at our last meeting, if you recall, I did share with you all that our buses began to release our students in the schools between eight-thirty and eight-forty-five. Now, we do have some buses that do get to school on occasion or from time to time before that eight-thirty time. We have some buses that get there after the eight-thirty time. And what are those dependent pieces? Just to remind you from our last meeting, there's a couple of things that really make the difference. So in the winter, the weather itself might make a difference in terms of when kids ride and when they depart from home to get to school. When kids are or aren't at their bus stops, sometimes the bus will pull up and Johnny's right at the corner. So that makes a difference. The bus can pick up the child and they can move right on to the school. Sometimes Johnny's not at the bus stop. And we have to, the bus driver has to wait for a couple of minutes, and that might make a difference. Also, it depends on what the roads are like. And sometime, in some parts of our district, it seems to snow much more severely than it does in other parts. It's interesting. You can be in one part, there's a whole other weather experience in another part. And the roads can be icier or, you know, depending on the weather, it can be very different. And then sometimes we have parents who don't call us and tell us that they're driving their kids into school. So some of our buses can get to school earlier. And some of them, depending on, you know, how many people aren't there and the buses are waiting longer periods for the kids to come out and they don't come out, they get there later. And all of those things play in to what happens. So our kids at eight-thirty, we start to have them come off the buses. Our teachers are out of their meetings and they're ready to receive kids. And they're receiving them between eight-thirty, eight-forty-five. And it really, again, depends on the weather. This is really nothing that's different from any district. At all districts, kids are getting to school at different times, especially during the winter time. So tonight, we heard five different times that kids, you know, it really depends on the day. It depends on the road situation. We heard a variety from eight-thirty-nine to up to eight-forty-nine. It really depends on what's happening on those different days out in the winter. It's very difficult to project the exact moment or minute they will get there. In the past, as I shared in the last meeting, what we used to do is just hold everybody on the bus depending on what school they were at. They wouldn't get off. This year, what happens is once they pull in, our goal is wherever they pull in, whether it's at W E or W P, we get the kids off the bus and get them in. Why do we do that? Because we want them to get into school, to get breakfast, or get their boots off, or get settled, bellwork, or whatever it is as soon as we can, and then start our day at eight-fifty. So I just kind of wanted to share that and just share as I did at the last meeting. It really is dependent upon, you know, what happens when kids are on the road with our drivers, especially in the wintertime, times that are going to vary. But our goal is by eight-forty-five to get them off as close to that time as we can and get them into class so we can get them going by eight-fifty. Yes?
A clarification, if they're there prior to eight-thirty, they can't be let off because teachers are not...
Correct. So our teachers, yes, our teachers are using meetings. They're sometimes talking with parents on phones. They're finishing up, you know, getting in and planning at about eight-thirty. They're, all hands are on deck for kids to start in those buildings.
And some of the days that are kind of nasty and slow-moving and that, there's usually in most districts, a little leeway or an announcement comes on that says, "Hold your attendance." We have a couple late buses. We have some, so instruction may not start exactly at eight-forty-five if only five kids are in the classroom or ten kids are in the classroom.
That's correct. Yes, just, and that happens in every district. And we just...
We can have you leave if you can't watch the language and make a talk. Thank you.
And also these young men over here, you've been very distracting and very rude to the people in front of you and to us.
To your meeting. So as I was saying, you know, we, that does happen in schools. Sometimes, you know, the bus times might vary. But I just wanted to explain. So we heard some concerns, and we'll continue to resolve and look for if there are issues. Our goal is to resolve wherever there is concern. So I just wanted to share that tonight. Okay, so with that being said, I'd like to now shift gears. We have Dr. Syracuse who is here, and some of our curriculum leaders are with us tonight who've been doing a really fantastic job. This year, we have some new programs in place. Last year, we enacted a new math program. This year, we've added to that math program for our sixth through eighth grade students at the middle school. We've added some really unique pieces with that program. And then we've also added a new ELA program for K-8 grades, K through six. So I'm going to bring these wonderful books up, and I'm going to turn the floor over to them. So tonight with me, I have Kim Schultz. She's our ELA coordinator. And Kasia Grisly, she's our math coordinator. Tonight, we're going to start by saying thank you to the board for, in recent meetings, adopting some new math and ELA programs for our teachers to use. We're going to give you a quick update in ELA and then in math, and then we'll give you time for any questions you may have. So first is why, why did we embark on these new programs? And it really begins with our strategic plan. You'll remember that we had thirty-four diverse stakeholders telling us that we needed a little more consistency and continuity, some vertical and horizontal alignment within our classrooms. I'll tell you that we have always had outstanding staff delivering high-quality instruction to our kids. So that wasn't the question. The question was, could we be more and better aligned so that we can get the most out of each year and so that our kids could have more common experiences, both within a grade level and then to build on as they go through the grade levels? So we began to look at some resources to help us do that. Actually, the initiative to get some new resources began with teachers who went out to workshops, who talked to their peers, who asked, "Could we look at this resource? Could we check out that program?" And so the resources that we've adapted have gone a long way in helping us to align. There's a lot of work within there, within that alignment. It doesn't answer all the questions of teaching and learning. It just provides a lot of resource to help us individualize, differentiate, and move in a common direction. But the program's only half of it. These guys are the other half, and they've been fantastic working with the teachers. So I'm happy to have them with me today to share their experiences so far and to talk about what are some of our next steps. Let's start with ELA.
So first and foremost, I would also like to thank you for your support in adopting this and helping us implement these new resources. As you may recall, last spring, we adopted Journeys and Collations, the ELA curriculum or program for grades K through six. We were able to order our materials and have them delivered and distributed to the staff by May when we were able to provide training from the company. During the summer, teachers were provided additional time to plan for the fall implementation. This planning included setting pacing guides and deciding on common, additional common assessments for each grade level. Over the last few years, we've worked to update our benchmarks and look at data to monitor and adjust our instruction. This new series has provided teachers with multiple resources and engaging texts, allowing them to continue with our best practices, such as guided reading and common standard-based assessments. The data that we are getting from these assessments lets us create an item analysis sheet and target students' individual needs to excel their learning. We will continue to provide support for our teachers and build confidence in the series. Additional professional development and release time is being provided to help teachers manage the wealth of resources, plan collaboratively, and share ideas with each other. Over the next summer, we plan to provide additional time for teachers to review the data, adjust our using and assessments, as well as reflect on our first year implementation.
So thank you again for your support and allowing us to share this little update tonight. The math programs, we have two of them kind of going on in the district supporting our curriculum. Math Expressions was adopted back in 2016, and we're in our second year. The Envision math program, which is the six-to-eight math program, was adopted at the end of our last school year. So this is the first year of implementation. And really, the six-to-eight teachers provided the energy behind getting this program in here. They were very excited to get started with it. So over the summer, our K-5 reviewed the first year. They plowed through math expressions the first year, and they took a look at how the data was and made some minor adjustments with assessments and their planning, pacing. And then the Envision team, the six-to-eight, had all their online resources and teacher materials so that they would be ready to jump in in the fall. So also with the restructuring of our district, there were a few teachers that hadn't taught math expressions the first year. So we did provide some additional training for them so they could get a good start. So in the fall, six and eight were off and running with the Envision program. And after a little bit of time with that program, we had an additional professional development training for them so that they had some time with the program. And then a trainer came in to work with them and answer any questions that they had and support their teaching process. And it's really, it's really going well. Their tech support has been really responsive to our questions and concerns. Now that all the kids have Chromebooks, it's really been exciting for them to start doing more consistent online assessments and stuff like that. It's been wonderful. Our K-5 staff is in their second year of implementation. So with Journeys being new, they were like, "Well, that's our stress point. We can relax with math expressions." But it's given them a little bit more depth with the resources. Light Journeys, there's plenty of resources that support all learning levels. So they've really been able to dig a little bit deeper, and I've been helping guide that work with them. So, and similarly to the ELA program, we collect unit test benchmark data and talk about it on a monthly basis with all the teams. And now currently, it's been, I just really feel honored in this position to have these kind of conversations with the different teams, the different grade-level teams, to talk about math concepts and how to reach their students. With Envision, the online platform with the Chromebooks has been awesome. And there are a few bugs that they've been really responsive for. And like any program, it's not going to be perfect. So math expressions, we've been sort of supplementing that. A few teachers are bringing back some of the Engage New York to kind of supplement some of the dips that they've seen or, you know, enrichment that they want to provide for their students. We're doing a fluency program now at the elementary school. So we're using some online resources to support that fluency. So we're really keeping our program strong with math expressions, with Envision, but also, you know, adding good teaching practice. And so it's both Kim and my job to check in, support, plan, facilitate, all that stuff. And over the summer, we'll do that again with the teacher workshops, giving them a little bit more breathing time to reflect on their year and plan for the next.
So we'll take any questions you might have.
Do these programs help the teachers in a more efficient way gather the data or it's gathered for them so they don't have to take the time to do that to analyze what they need to work with the kids on certain parts that found that they were lacking when they got tested? Does it kind of do it for them a little bit and save some time? Or it just makes it easier? Or how's that work?
It's, we kind of do that. We are that piece for them because they don't always get to take all the tests online. And we found that the teachers really liked what we've created for item analysis for them so that they can, we can compile that and get that out to the teachers.
So is it easier for you to do that now?
Yeah, right. And they, right, they correct the test. So they see immediately what their students need and where they're strong and where they might be falling down. But when we meet as a team, we see it more as a grade level. You know, and we see it across the, and then they share a little bit in their teaching style so we have really, really great conversations to help, you know, boost everybody.
One of the things you mentioned is your benchmark assessments. And I realize we're only six months into it. How confident are you that as an end result, we're going to see improvement in the number of students scoring proficient and above on our state test?
That's the million-dollar question.
We're absolutely confident.
It is relatively early in the year, but we do, we did our star assessment. So we have a fall and we have a winter. And we've seen an increase of students going from, I think our biggest bump was actually from our, well, ones, twos, but our biggest number rise was students that weren't at level three in ELA. So we see them definitely having improvement.
How's it work with the new schedule? Is it matching up well, matching up the shorter periods versus last year with the program?
K-4 has a similar commitment to... Well, I'm saying five, six, seven. So K-4 has a similar schedule than it had in previous years. So we have two hours for ELA and sixty minutes for math every day. Five, six, we are at fifty-five-minute periods, but we also have double-blocked every other day. So in ELA, so they have an hour and ten minutes every other day and fifty-five minutes every other day. And actually, so that was a little bit of an adjustment upward every other day because it's a little longer than they've been used to at fifth and sixth grade.
The math piece, what do you think of fifty-five? What have you heard at the five, eight?
Five through eight, there, that was one of the first concerns, I think, of the teachers. And they wanted to make sure that the lessons fit. And so they're doing sort of one Envision lesson over two days. And they find that that works fine because they, you know, one day is sort of intense, the next day is practice and follow-up. So I think that it's working with the new schedule.
And for ELA, because they do have the longer block one day, they've been able to integrate more things into, like, they set up their schedule so that, you know, they have time to do a novel study, they have time to get their writing, and then on the shorter days, they'll do the core story. So they've been able to work with it and really fine-tune it to their needs.
Do you find that, any feedback from the teachers or what you've seen? I mean, the programs are supposed to be able to reach kids that were struggling and then the kids that are needing more. Are they, I mean, some kids, "I'm getting bored," because they don't have anything else, are they seeking out and getting those other higher-level learnings in this, both of these programs?
I think so. I think that there is a plethora of resources with both Journeys, Collections, and Math Expressions. Envision, Envision has taken it to a more online, sort of the, oh, turn it, the flipped classroom and really like a project over the whole week kind of thing. And so it's really introducing a lot of really on the edge, cutting-edge teaching.
And in ELA, they've been able to, again, they've been really reaching for those higher-level texts and really being able to get into conversations, having some literature over, being able to really get those kids thinking and being analytical with that. And again, the support for the lower students, I think for, especially with Journeys and Collections, they offer a really good piece for that.
Thank you.
One of the things I've noticed just from a parent's standpoint, at least specifically with the math, is if a child's absent, the teacher can let you know what unit they're on, and they can just log in through their account and keep up with not only the practice but the actual lesson. So, it's no longer waiting till you get back to school to get the worksheets, to catch up with the teacher. They can follow along and stay caught up on days that they aren't there if they need to. So, it's, yeah, it's amazing.
And part of what we're doing is trying to build their capacity with the program. So, there is a lot of resource, but, you know, the teachers need time to develop their expertise with what's in their awareness of what's up. And that's what we're trying to accomplish in workshops and release time and things like that. When resources first came, I didn't think we were going to find these guys. The boxes were packed from floor to ceiling, and it was daunting just to get them organized by grade level. And remember, we were changing schools and we were doing all these things. So, it's a lot of resource for the teachers. I think the teachers at first were very overwhelmed, particularly with ELA. So, we've been trying to just be reassuring and working with time. It's going to take a little bit more time.
Can I just add, Joe and I talk about the program from time to time. My wife is also a teacher, and she is using the Journeys program this year. So it's great because I can see her experience, but also talk with our teachers and try to connect and see what are people thinking. And she shares often, so Journeys has a lot of resources, right? There's a lot of differentiated pieces that's included in the program for kids from all different levels. And she shared with me, when she first started, boy, there's a lot of stuff. So trying to unpack that, understand it, and use that program has been, you know, it's busy, just trying to understand the resources, make sure you connect with what comes first, second, third, and fourth in the lesson. And our teachers are sharing that same feedback, you know? It's that first year of learning it, understanding it. And we believe that by year two, year three, they'll be even better than they're doing with it now. And I also wanted to share, one of the things I really enjoyed, so I was meeting with a principal just a week ago, and she was sharing with me outcomes from her kid, her students. And she shared with me the different standards, and I think, Kim, you may have done this, the report, and she was showing me the different number of students who were reaching the standard, the ones who weren't reaching it. And they could actually, they now have to segregate the data to be able to look right at a state standard, understand how many kids are getting it, how many kids are not, and that's real-time data so teachers can adjust their practice pretty quickly to be able to meet the needs of our kids. And that, fantastic reports, by the way. I was, wow, this is great. And that's what we kind of needed in a program. We needed to know where kids were, how they're doing, and so that we could adjust practice wherever possible to meet their needs. And I've seen that happening, and I certainly saw that. Donna was sharing that report with me just a week ago. So, really, really great.
And again, our district has always been committed to guided reading and they're able to get into guided reading, which is a core belief for our teachers here. That's amazing. We have amazing staff.
Are you working with the teachers that are like Brad, who's doing accelerated math?
I'm, my position is case six, but I do support seven and eight with the new Envision program.
And we have consumables for both workbooks for both?
Yeah, both programs.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
I think just one thing I was impressed with hearing, having been a teacher myself and going through new programs, you're right, it's daunting. The first, there's just so much. But I think having your group meetings, there'll be one teacher that's tried something that nobody else has, and they talk about it, oh, yeah. And then you go look at, I mean, that's so important. And I'm impressed that you're doing that. And I think that will further people's comfort level as well as exploring more things because for one person to explore it is very difficult when you've got several, you know...
Easy to get overwhelmed and isolated, right?
It has been, you know, there's, we've made a lot of changes in the district. It's been, one of the things that's been a very positive thing for us is to be able, when you talk to the kindergarten team, all the kindergarten team with us, when we talk about inconsistency and sharing ideas, that's one thing I will say has been extremely helpful in terms of building a team that's all working in the same direction and on the same things and looking at the same data. So, very helpful.
I'm not sure if anyone has other questions, but I would like to thank these ladies. Jill, thank you very much. I can tell you, board, you know, these are positions that have been just invaluable. Principals have told me multiple times how much they value having feedback from both of these ladies. And I have one who's telling me, "If you ever touch that position, it's going to be me and him." But honestly, they have been...
We hate them.
It's been valuable. Thank you for your hard-working efforts. I want you to hear me say that.
Thank you for supporting us.
I know.
Thank you.
So, board, that pretty much concludes my report for tonight. We are looking for support for board business items. There's a budget transfer, reading of, first reading of our policies, three, twenty-three, thirty-two, twenty-five, seventy-one, thirty, seventy-one, thirty-two. And then a second reading of policy, seventy-two, forty, that deals with student records, access and challenge. And then tonight, we have a consent agenda that has some personal actions there. Audit committee meeting minutes from December twenty-first. Our CSC and CPSC recommendations from those meetings. The board meeting minutes from January eleventh. There's a gift for hockey-related activities. And then there is a treasurer report ending December thirty-first. And then a policy committee meeting minutes from January eleventh, that we are, all of which we're seeking approval for tonight. Okay? Thank you.
All right, board, we'll now move through the action items listed on our agenda. Need a motion to approve the budget transfer of twenty-two thousand one hundred and six dollars. Ron, second. Matt, any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. Need a motion to approve the first reading of policies, thirty-two, twenty-five, seventy-one, thirty, and seventy-one, thirty-two. Pam, second. Phil, any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. All right, I need a motion to approve the second reading of policy, seventy-two, forty. Carla, second. Steve, any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. I need a motion to approve the consent agenda. Ron, second. Pam, any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. All right, move on to committee reports. Committee, Matt?
Yeah, we had our meeting last Thursday and received our plans audit report. We had a few findings. The district had already responded to the findings and everything was found to be acceptable. And I think that was about it. Well, we picked a target for internal audit, and that'll be information technology, the assets and security. And next meeting is scheduled for March, I think it was eighteenth, fifteenth.
Okay. Thank you. Policy committee, Carrie?
Our next meeting is Thursday, March twenty-second, at six o'clock in this room. And Kathy today announced the policies that we need to review for that meeting.
All right, thank you. Carla, wellness committee?
Nothing to report since our last meeting, just that the Coaches vs. Cancer is coming up, March second. It's a Friday night. There will be lots of activities in between the quarters, music, little teams, like the PV teams are playing. So, it should be a fun night for all, and it's all to lead up to our Reeling for Life in June.
Okay, thank you. Communication committee, I'll just speak for Jeremy. Jeremy wasn't able to be here and canceled the meeting for today, but we reschedule one in the future and talk about the role of that committee and what's going to be going on. All right. Board member comments, our board president comments, I should say. I haven't yet at the moment. Just spoke about Peter Pan before, and there's a lot of work that went into that. So, we've congratulated those people many times, and all the kids that participated, it was a great time. Athletics are going well. Everybody gets to loud and we see everybody there, so, and many of the other events that the school holds. So, a few concerts coming up, so make sure we get, look at the dates on those, get to that, so.
Tim, I was amiss when we went around for board member comments, and I wanted to congratulate Jeff Beach. He did all the lighting, all the text stuff, all the mics, all this stuff. Was like every performance, every night. And I know the parents were impressed with his ability, and sometimes he just goes above and beyond, and he is a true asset to that pack unit.
And he trains the kids there so that they learn how to do it too. So it's been a good thing, so. Okay, I need a motion for adjournment. Matt, second. Steve, any discussion on that? All in favor? Any opposed?
The only one Jeremy doesn't get to raise his hand.